Saw Barry had one pandemic, thirty-five hundred dollars. But two thousand will be a rental, so you'll get a bill for a rental.
Okay.
Chartered to the C-Tip project.
Are you writing C-Tip on your rock and everything? I mean, I need, we need it, we can't, we can't. Oh crap. Because if they did and we separated, what are you gonna do down there?
I am making you copies of all the rock tickets with C-Tip owning them. With the dates that the work was done, that matches the work and the hours and the men's time. And I can get those back and split them, but that's gonna make you happy.
Are you putting the road name on there?
Sure.
I'm not very sure. I wonder if I got any of the road, the rock tickets?
The road names and dates?
I just put C-Tip.
Um.
We've got the road name on.
Have we already gotten some tickets for some of them?
I just handed them in this morning.
Okay, you're good then. Long as she hadn't already. Because she did pay Zach Burkett on this one. Well, we'll figure it out.
Well, we've been hauling rock out there for a month. You don't all just turn on and turn off. We've got other things to do sometimes.
I may have to.
A lot of times. You made what?
I'm just thinking.
Are you two here seeing this right now?
No.
He's gonna test more after he turns them in.
I know, I was just thinking if somebody got paid out of your budget, how, we'll figure it out.
How are you paying them?
Well, she keeps them in on this run.
You paid out a different line?
Yeah.
Yep, we put a different one for that money.
If we know their season, we're paying out that road bridge down the line.
Can you make an accounting adjustment to take it back out and put it into that line?
What is there to do with the data? Don't think that they are supposed to be over that road around the arena.
I know, what is that? I talked to Jack Edwards, I was communicating with him about some of the situations with the premium doing. He said, oh yeah, by the way, Brandon told me to stop out there on Craig Street. I'm doing some chip seal on it. He said the city, that's not the city, the city didn't take that in with the annexation.
Yes, he did.
He said they took in the, the barge on the arena side.
I know.
To the apart, I'm just telling you what they told.
But it says specifically in that order.
It says Craig Street?
Well, it says the streets around it, then what city is responsible for.
The streets surrounding?
Yeah.
Well, this is not the first time we've had a misunderstanding with the city. I'm just relating the information to you as soon as I got it.
It's, uh, it's pretty, you know, that was.
Looked at the diagram and there is a bold line in the barges and down the streets. That means they're not, you know, Carroll, Woody, or Craig Street. They're disavowing responsibility for.
The Young County Court come to order. Uh, being session, it is nine thirty a.m. on Monday, November the twenty-third, two thousand and twenty. This is a regular meeting. Make note that the meeting has been hosted in the manner for the time required. That all members of the court are present. We are tentatively, I think, I hope, on the live stream. If anybody might want to make a, a comment with regard to any matter that is on the agenda, they, they may in person appear, or they may call nine four zero two two one two one zero seven if they would like to make comment. If it's convenient, I'll stand. My Father in Heaven, we thank you for this today, for all many blessings you brought to us. We're grateful for this country, for this state, for this county. And we're grateful for the opportunity to serve our citizens. Uh, we add true blessings upon this meeting and, and the things that have come uh, to our attention that need action or that need the process of any sort that you have guided the direction of this court. Uh, we're grateful for all the members of our community who stand in arms away for their freedoms, uh, and liberties that we have come to know, to understand, to love. We add good blessings upon this nation, upon the state, upon this county, upon all the leaders thereof, elected or currently serving. We'd like to thank you for all the members of our emergency responders, our service departments, and our sheriffs. We ask that you're comforting armed, cover those who suffer losses due to disease or accidents or other circumstances. We ask your forgiveness for all of the shortcomings that we have, and we know you will. We ask these in the name of Christ the Savior, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible. Thank you.
Out of number three, public comments announced in the presidential. I guess COVID up to date would be, um, first, that's the only thing I have on this, but, um, as of last account from Shane Cornell with the Grand Regional Hospital, we have tested seven thousand two hundred and thirty-five persons uh, in our Young County facilities, whether they be Graham or Raleigh or elsewhere in the county. Five thousand eight hundred and seventy-three have been negative tests. There have been thirteen hundred and twenty-nine positives. That's from the start through now, we have thirty-three tests pending. Currently, out of the Young County facilities, there has been two hundred, there are two hundred and eight positive tests. And those persons that are currently residing in Young County, number one hundred and seventy-three at last count. That's my report there, I don't have anything else. Is there any, anything other than that? I guess there's, you should congratulate the ground steers on their, um, sound win. Uh, and I guess that they're will play.
Saturday at Globe Lock Park.
Globe Lock Park?
Yes, against Aubrey.
Aubrey. I think I understood that Aubrey won that game in the last.
Seconds.
Right at the end.
Yeah, they did.
Is this from regional or from?
Yes, from, yeah. Senate Finals, regional.
Yeah, regional.
Fumble called it, I think it did.
Was it a fumble? They win this game.
The other, the other team had it won, but they fumbled and Aubrey couldn't.
Why are you handling the ball?
Too good.
It's a blizzard.
Elker snapped and followed.
Is there anything else that anybody?
Uh, I suppose that the Christmas stroll downtown will happen before we have our next meeting, so. Okay, that's happening on the third, I believe. Is that right?
December the fourth.
It says Thursday night. Uh, Thomas, do you have any details about that?
I'm pretty sure it's at six.
Six o'clock, somewhere around that area?
Somewhere around that time.
Sundown? Be very.
Yeah, there'll be a Christmas parade and the stroll. I'm sure it'll be a little bit modified because of COVID.
Take the opportunity then to ask the public, please do all that they can to, um, not gather in one spot and, uh, over the strobe at the time. Keep their social distance as best they can and, um, with advice that they wear masks. Those things will be still the recommendations of our medical field CDC and all of our surgeon and channel and medical community anyway. Um, we do have, we don't have, but the governor does have a state mask mandate, uh, in place. But there is a hump team duty and exemptions to that. And, um, we're not any, uh, under any order, specific order from county. I'm not sure about the city. It's still recommended that you, you know, you are responsible for your own health and, um, and you should, we'd ask that you be responsible for other peoples or respect of other peoples. Possible. Well, when they could be infected, uh, exposure.
Of course, Thursday is a big holiday for family gatherings, so.
Good evening.
Pray that all the families kind of are protected. Say a prayer for everybody and we come away healthy for Thanksgiving dinner.
Common sense and respect. And, you know, be cautious is what I will not have to say. And pray. Okay, nothing further. Um, out of number four, we consider county clerk's minutes previous meeting, November the ninth and the sixteenth. Sixteenth was the candidates, I believe, in the general election of two thousand and twenty. So is there any correction or addition to that? Rogers, do you second that?
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number five is considered Craig's financial report, updates on security pledges. Ms. Craig, do you have anything?
Thomas, there's just a security pledge in there.
Four million, four hundred and five thousand dollars, she's over eighty-eight cents.
Salute. I'm in second.
That'll be a watching.
Too much e-haw.
E-haw.
That's exactly what it was.
Yeah.
Okay, there you go. Root's security pledges.
In, in that.
Two. Look, Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
Item number six would be, uh, consider all of your budget amendments about your paper.
I always have vouchers, lots of vouchers. Today is a pretty big run, and I'll explain why. Uh, total on this run is four hundred and seven thousand nine fifty-two ninety-five. And out of the general is three hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars and seventeen cents. Uh, two hundred and twelve of it was NAPADA annual maintenance, which we used to get a three percent discount, we don't, so we had to pay the whole thing. And sixty-one thousand is vehicle and liability insurance. So that kind of makes the general kind of high.
Yes, so.
And there is Don's Butane included.
So move.
Those, um. What's the company that owns that?
Uh, I, I'm Free Bear Cat. Yeah.
Uh, Free Bear Cat.
Then I can quit my company.
Skip beginning and start with you.
Some of them on that.
Okay, I've got a motion from, from Mr. Pruitt, second.
Yeah, same.
Rogers. Okay. To approve, uh, voucher paper as presented, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, who?
Four oh one.
Four oh one.
Uh-oh, we haven't seen one.
Also, I, I received, Fran received, opened it this morning in voice from the city of Graham, this is for the bond supervision officer for the ending for nine thirty. Um, I know I said we aren't going to pay any more twenty bills, but if I could just pay this one and it's not, it's six thousand four eighty-four fourteen to be paid out of the two thousand and twenty budget, I can run this one as a, as a voucher just for this one, which is.
What are we paying on this?
That's our part, see, because the difference of one he brought in, he brought in twenty-eight thousand nine oh seven. The expenses were sixty-seven thousand five oh three oh eight. And our part is sixteen point eighty percent.
You don't go on a month run?
No, this is.
Last year.
Yeah, it's, it's a annual one. They haven't sent it yet. And it's been in the past where your revenues are more and so we didn't have to pay or, we're not paying the ten thousand we had budgeted, we're paying six thousand four eighty-four fourteen. But I'll have to do it as a two thousand and twenty run, but it's okay.
So move.
It is, what it is.
I'll leave that for.
I'm thought.
That's what you said last time.
Sure, six thousand one?
Uh, six thousand four eighty-four and fourteen cents.
Wow.
Second.
Root? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number seven is discuss, consider void bonds for recent grounds with the Young County Community Supervision, Craig's Department, five thousand dollars.
So move.
Same.
Motion by Commissioner Wiley, second by Commissioner Rogers to approve that bond as requested, all in favor?
Aye.
Item number eight, discuss, consider regional public defenders capital cases. Our annual membership due to that is six thousand seven hundred and twenty-four dollars. Not a whole lot of difference from what it was last year, but it's a little increase something.
So move. Like better than Galveston, Kenny.
Oh, wow.
Better than Galveston, Kenny. Hundred and seven thousand.
Yeah, there's no movement on that.
For their membership?
Yeah.
Second.
Wow.
Look at you.
Yeah.
All in favor of maintaining membership at sixty-seven twenty-four for, uh, two thousand and twenty-one year, all in favor?
Aye.
I do.
Will that be under attack by S B twenty-nine in the next week?
That, um.
I wouldn't think so. This year?
Any membership, anybody's got anything to do with the lobbyists and?
I'll hear something else we're supposed to do with that. I think we're supposed to pass a resolution.
Yeah, we're a resolution.
Because that's, that, uh, that's changing itself.
It could change in the ownership there.
Yes, changing the organization a little bit, not altering the prices, but.
We got a pretty good board on there, pretty good side board. It'll open the roof. It's only good for one capital murder trial a year, right?
And one defendant, these drug?
And I guess that changes the size, depending on the size of your county. I figured that's why, uh, Galveston and Webb and all them other counties have got no money with Westin.
And ours is only like a thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Population basis, yeah.
Yeah. Are there fifteen people in murder? Well, that's close. I think we agree with those things.
Draw more in sixteen hundred.
Really?
More needs sixteen hundred. Good way of working.
Edward Ray Keith Junior, the chief public defender.
Yes.
We need to talk to you, Chad. Yes, Percol, it is spelled, spelled with a G. Really? D-E-O-L-L.
Couple of those gifts.
Okay.
We have created the regional public defender office, local building corporation has a local service to, to, to any defendants or participating counties who enter into the interlocal agreement. R-P-D-O-L-G-C. Provide the same service at the same cost, but reorganized for some reason or another. So it will be necessary for a participating county by January the first, two thousand and twenty-one, enter into a new interlocal agreement with the R-P-D-O-dash-L-G-C as the current R-P-D-O office will cease to exist as of December the thirty-first, two thousand and twenty. Interlocal is attached and is, uh, to give the fines to the board of directors for this corporation. Oracles and incorporation are included in there, so I guess with inter.
So move.
Motion to adopt the resolution.
So move.
I'll second.
That's a well worth dealing.
We have.
Motion by Mr. Wiley, second by Mr. Sykes to, um, execute.
And that is a budget item?
In the interlocal.
I can get that paid and shall approve.
And that's going to be with.
Sixty-seven twenty-four.
It's going to be with R-P-D-O-dash-L-G Corporation.
How's your county's state situation? You have almost fifty thousand dollars in loans that come along now.
Your eyes swaying across the defense for capital cases. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, I'm number two thousand.
Item number nine is discuss, consider two thousand and twenty-one membership to, um, R-P-D-O. Three hundred and nine hundred and five dollars. Not rural counties in Texas.
Association of Rural County.
Texas.
Union.
Counties.
Union communities. I've been in Texas. Union.
We've been being a membership of that for a few years. I don't know, it's flavor of the fourth, if you want to maintain that. I respect that it would probably be our benefit as a rural county. Well, I do, we'd like to maintain that membership if somebody hasn't already done that.
I'll second.
Then working, uh, need. Second, uh, Mr. Pruitt. All in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? None vote. Five. Item number ten, discuss, consider subdivision rules, corporate policy of permits. And then if it's going to coincide. Item number eleven, discuss, consider application of permit to install corporate county road right of way. This line, I didn't get to that this week, so I didn't make modifications that we wanted that was requested. But I'll have an opportunity to get down to that. We'll be open for discussion.
The only other thing in there that I think we need to reconsider unless there's a statute that says we have to do a number only if we have to read, if, could we come up here and say it's not installed correctly by a customer or a constituent? Or if we're working on the road and it's causing a problem on drainage, it says not to exceed five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
And that's kind of putting us in a bad place because we don't know what size cover is going to be or what that cover is going to cost at that time. And you and I both know that they've gone up considerable on price. But if it comes up first to forty-eight years' coverage, then that's going to be pretty expensive cover.
Right.
Thirty foot long, forty foot long. So I think we are, we don't marry it, we can't, we're going to charge whatever the, that rate is, whatever the time, whatever the cost is. Cost to the coverage.
And in two years, it's going to be a small one probably.
And that's, and that way we won't have to worry about changing this in times come. And just do coverage for whatever season we're in, or whatever year we're in. It's a thought.
Replace five hundred dollars for that cost?
Just, just the same, in whatever the cost would be.
Is that in section L?
That's in section L.
L.
If we leave the five hundred, that's, that's beholden to us to pay whatever excess the five hundred is. And if it's got.
Cost of repair?
Yes, whatever cost of repair is. And let's say they've got a, it's encased in concrete or something like that, then you're, I mean, there's so many different scenarios that you could be involved in.
You know, that one thing will push people, let us install them rather than have someone outside?
Yes.
To call it a live build, yes?
Yes. Because we're, in, in essence, we're responsible for it either. One way or the other, so.
Absolutely, just trying to get back our cost of doing.
That's right. See, we're going to change B, and then we're going to change in there besides that, wouldn't it? We're going to take some wording out.
Yeah, you say B?
Yeah, B, we're going to change out of B there.
Without permission?
If we had permission, would we say, we can acquire permission from the state?
Or the landowner, because we'll put one in and somebody drop with a problem.
Yeah, either way.
What kind of landowner give us permission to do all their flexibility?
Well, not, not.
Everyone.
Not a proper road domain.
But isn't a driveway probably?
No. If it's in our, if it's in.
Oh, it's in the, I'm interested in. Oh, it's in the, I'm interested in it's line fence line sixty foot.
Yeah.
Not in the, it's got an.
If it's in our east, then it's our.
Yeah, you're right.
That's why I'm sending guys out to name the foot in rock and two we've already installed. I'll, I'll wait after it rains over or whatever, till it gets some set in.
Some settle on it. When are we going to get rain with your meteorologist?
When you think, we had two something inches up there, Mark, this way. We ain't. Last time it rained in there.
Every.
And B will modify that too.
And there was another one in there, I think we was talking about taking some of the, you remember? Kay. It's what we were changing the wording in that, we've taken some wording out of it.
Well, we were talking, I know we were on the permit application permit part, we were talking about that dollar of permit fee.
Yeah, we're going to take permit fee out, but there was something else in here in our.
You want to go in there, please?
Yes, please.
We're going to talk about this young. For the. About ninety days in there.
Ninety days is, is good as far as getting a foot place. If we can't do it in three months, we're probably only thing it would do if it rained for three months. That'd have to go wrong. There's another problem. Remember that one other thing? There's one other thing.
I hear you, I'm going to say. This permit about ninety days, subject to extension?
Yes.
Don't do that permit fee. Application, wasn't it?
Was it the H, permit fee? So, no, we the, yeah, I think it was a permit fee. It's scheduled for installation, it's expected to be brought to the owner, install driveway cover as during the fence to county specifically and responsible, yeah, we're responsible for the cover.
Yeah.
Yeah.
On the application, that number one, that last sentence? Can we take it out? No, because if you look at E and H, there's two different things. One says, ease as we will, and H says they will. The county's application trust is property or domain installed over. Call it, never mind.
No, just saying.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're looking on the application permit to install entry. Number one.
County and state of Texas does hereby approve, deny, application link to install a cover design location insurance of cover installation shall be, that's easily authorized by this permit. We're going to take out permit fee if applicable, maybe refundable away, and then we're going to add in there.
Just going to put this permit valid for ninety days.
Valid for ninety days, subject to extension.
Put a capital T on this and start at there.
Yeah. We were talking about E and some on subdivision. About the Young County public regulation shall apply within subdivision, so we'd have to change the subdivision rules to match. They will be all right with that.
Thanks, ma'am.
Do you want to run? Yes. That was the safety.
That was two, yeah.
Yeah, all time. And then four, right there.
There it is, length and safety and caps adequate.
Yeah, that was it. That was it. Thank you for that.
And then permit fee may be refundable or waived, is taken out?
Uh, yes, it's taken out too.
This permit is valid for ninety days, subject to extension?
Yes. Capital T, that deal with this.
On the application permit, uh-huh. Number one, that last sentence? Read, currently reads, permit fee may be refundable or waived. Take that out and start the sentence with this permit available for ninety days, subject to extension, with no reference to permit fee.
Okay. We're missing something here. You must have been working on this a little bit, John, is.
Yeah, I'm familiar.
Uh, four A and four A on here, different. It is recommended that property owner contact county, county manager to receive determination on appropriate cover damage island length adequate to allow the necessary global safety. Okay. That's, that's what we did on there, so you must agree, you must have worked on this.
Yeah, I did a bill on there, I saw it.
That's why I couldn't mind it, because that's.
Yeah, that permit.
Yeah, so that part been changed, okay? Forward been changed.
Okay, so the B?
I B, number forward been changed.
Number four is going to read, it is required that property owner contact or foster county precinct commissioner to receive the termination on appropriate cover size and length adequate to allow for necessary water flow and safety.
Yes, that's what we said, yes.
So what about P? Do you want to get down?
No, B's nothing to change.
No, it has.
It has been.
It has.
Yeah, we're going to modify that to say, Young County Road and Bridge precincts count that covers and right of ways of unbridled roads. We're going to say, covers and right of ways of state roads without written authorization.
Yes, yes.
They talk to that, you have permission.
Yeah, that's.
Or unbridled roads.
That's right. That's right. So that B is what we're going to change on that. Then the rest of it is going to be on the application itself.
One out of mail. Act four, charge not to exceed five hundred or cause her to pay.
Young counties will notify property owners, not even in progress or improper collection of covers. If not addressed in ten days, going to take ten days then, or you wait ten days in there?
Paper has thirty?
Yeah, this paper has thirty days.
Yeah.
Whatever it is, county will perform corrective action for a charge. Forget thirty days.
Thirty days will be plenty.
Ten days too, little. For a charge not to exceed the cost to the county, uh, actual cost of repair.
Yes.
There you go.
Yes. That's on L. You need to make that, instead of ten, make it thirty.
It's thirty on this one, she's going to get.
I don't know why.
Not addressed in thirty days, the county will perform corrective action for a charge not to exceed actual cost of repair. There you go.
And, uh, you've already taken out the.
Right, polish still.
It's already taken out on its own, the application itself. That's good. So all we got to do is just take out that, where it says this permit, capitalize, yes, T. And then when they come to get the permit, then this deal is stapled to the back of their, their permit, so they can read over their, a bright thing that they're about to do.
We got all the rules.
All the rules is right there with them. Do we need them?
All right. They'll be like, for example, Barnes, you know, here. Do you?
Well, we can take some with us at the barn and they can be here, whatsoever they want to get.
Yeah, yeah.
You going to vote on this with the changes made, or you want to wait and make the changes? Let's make the changes and then we'll vote.
Wait the changes, yeah.
Let's make the changes and then we'll vote on it.
I agree.
Okay. Go ahead, come on.
See on that level? Does any of y'all approve, approve that subdivision rule and regulations?
Yes, sir. I've got a copy of one, I've seen, I've already been trying to do some comparing with. Ours is about this thing, everyone's about this thing.
I'm tired of picking it up.
So what they did was, is they incorporated, well, we have a separate one for mobile homes.
Yeah.
They incorporated theirs all in the same deal, so that way if you're looking for it, you it's going to be in the same situation, so we like to think about doing that.
Well, Kay, Kay's got ours posted on, on our home page, but under general. On this general.
General information, okay.
General information, but it's both of them are together.
But I think it's coming, we need to get, we need to get. The only thing we need to work on on that really is, is what we talked about last time here is we don't want the two entrances into a, a facility that they're going to have a bunch of housing, you know? Instead of having a one line, one, one entrance in and a whole bunch of covers coming all over like that, we don't want that.
The co-fines of subdivision, there'll be two entrances into that subdivision?
I would think.
Or an entrance and an exit.
Well, here's the deal, though. In a situation like that, it makes sense for the emergency vehicles to have more than one entrance in and one entrance out.
Sure.
On, on some remote, while we're still on these two sections, this guy's sending emails to me with regard to the Young County Arena area. I'll send email back, I might not PC to everybody on this, um, I believe on the streets within Young County arenas. And there are betting, the betting streets are the city's responsibility.
That's what I was saying.
Has happened for the last two, three years?
Whenever they annexed it in there, they, there was an agreement.
Yep.
I knew that.
And I think we did have, we had a pretty, I think, pretty serious deliberation out here with the city and what the central end of that was, that we wouldn't contest that annexation, annexation if they take responsibility of the road.
Yes.
Understanding that we've got responsibilities out there in that industrial part. But with that annexation, then I feel like, and if it's in their ordinance, it's plain as can be.
Yeah.
If they take responsibility in that attached interlocal, we, the county can assist if the court so votes by majority to do so without an agreement, but it doesn't, it doesn't prevent a specific agreement. If that's going to be approached. But we don't, I'm persuaded that we don't have any responsibility on the, your streets inside the arena property or a body.
Attached themselves to the arena property. Uh, this came up when Mr. Edwards said that he had been doing some chip sale on Craig Street, Denver, the New Peak facility, and that he had been pulled off of that and told that was not the city's responsibility, that it was county's responsibility. So no longer, he can be spending money on. So that's what.
Okay.
That's one of the point of the arena and the, you know, kind of.
Right, from the animal shelter, Danforth.
And we're not saying that, that our, our responsibility on that same street, it's end, or that is to the end of that street, we, we are responsible for.
From Woody Street back to the.
But, but anything from their line.
That attaches it, so it's arena park?
All the way to the intersection and then back to the, to the west right there. You know?
That one's through Carroll Street?
That would be through Carroll Street. Now, everything in Carroll, the west street from intersection back to the east. Their south will be our responsibility. But anything that's adjacent to that is their responsibility, because of the annexation. And to me, when you annex it, you're going to annex it to full all the way, so.
Not just the parages?
Not just the parages. Because they're, they're receiving funds and, and money off of that.
Yeah, I see they've got some over annexation going on, or so five of the hill, this, or five of the hill.
I bet they go out that way too. Or restart and build houses on side, backside of them.
And there's that subdivision, well, I call it subdivision, exactly what it is going on out there right now. And it is in the city, federal territorial jurisdiction, and we do have agreements when we went into these subdivision rules and regulations, that anything is within a federal territorial jurisdiction of the city of the army or the city of the ground is their responsibility, I mean, their, their rules and regulations are available. And I think that's at least a mile out. Might be two, at least one mile.
Pretty good, where you turn back and go left in there toward the cart lane out there.
Yeah.
How's that deal with the elders subdivision, Springwood, East Park, Pembroke? Are they under city rule?
They're our jurisdiction right now. Unless they go to annex. I, you know, I wonder why they haven't already done that, you know, it's dead, better, better than tax. Was a crunch, just like everybody else has for a long time, even more. Okay. Moving on to number twelve. Discuss, consider requesting sealed bins for road materials, asphalt products, covers, tires, tubes, fuel for the two thousand twenty-one county year.
You want to open them on December twenty-eighth?
Um, that would be.
Ten AM?
I guess we've kind of got a standard, uh, standard for that.
We've been currently using Wilson.
Uh, thank you, I'd like to go there too.
Uh, my understanding is it's A and N that's fixing to start handling Wilson covers?
Wilson?
Yes. So
That's right.
If Wilson does this, then maybe we can work a deal out, and it would save with their trucking deal, be able to pull.
Stop some of your friends?
Down here. It's just a thought.
And please also send one to contact.
I do every year. They just, you know, like, didn't just.
I talked to, did you have a. Fans, all the side, the side of the stuff, decent process to get that built.
So I'll send to Wilson and contact them.
That's going to be where. Say, do you? Do you have any? Do you have any other ones?
He's going to start handling Wilson coves, yes.
I've seen Jim's got like a bigger yard out there, so.
Yes.
So don't even send Jimmy one of those bedsheets?
It'll come from Wilson.
It'll come from Wilson, yeah. And I think they'll, Wilson, they could deal with Jimmy probably to be able to replace it or replenish it in order or whatever. That would help us out, we need one in, in a.
In a beach.
Yeah. Just a thought.
Yeah, but right now, though, they're free delivery for twenty-five hundred dollar worth of more, right?
So open December twenty-eighth at ten A.M.?
Close it here Friday.
Close it at Friday at, um, well, is that right before the holiday? I mean, Christmas and stuff, so we'll have to close it before.
Before being Friday.
Yeah.
I mean, that's holiday and that's Christmas.
Mm-hmm.
Christmas holiday.
Twenty-eighth, that's?
So we'll have to do it on?
Yeah, on the twenty-third. Cause you got Christmas Eve on the twenty-fourth, or Christmas on the twenty-fifth, you'd have to do it on the twenty-third.
Nobody will be here until Christmas.
Twenty-third is what I'd say.
Yeah.
But we're not opening anywhere.
Do it on the twenty-third, huh?
Just do it by noon on the twenty-third.
I wish you would do it on the twenty.
I should be twenty-third.
By noon?
Maybe the twenty-third, that's you.
By noon?
Yeah. The second we bought here today.
Yeah.
Door to make lemon and car to be straight.
Don't get in front of us.
Open Friday, uh, wrong, Monday?
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth.
Say that again?
Okay, on Friday?
Oh, wait a minute, I didn't think of Monday.
I'm going, I'm going to resign on that, I guess.
What was that?
What did it say, fuel beds, I'm not.
Yeah.
Big thing?
Yeah, well, we need to resend this motion because it said fuel beds and he's on fuel, so I will take that motion.
I want to resend that, Dave, I just put my piece.
I'll do that.
Yeah.
Put your tips in.
On Friday?
Uh.
Four oh one?
Yes.
Okay. Out of the number. What are the things, discuss, consider, two thousand and twenty-one holidays yet, well, I wasn't going to do this during next meeting, but I got all the rules there, but.
Got put on there. I'm not a builder, but.
I think I've sent y'all the two, what we had, had for the twenty twenty, but Jimmy's gone for twenty twenty-one, anybody? So we have a good group, all day.
So we just got twelve holidays, right?
Thirteen.
You, now, I, I included that in this package.
Yeah. What do you include?
I said I included the twenty twenty.
It got taped out?
Do y'all want a copy of?
No.
I do.
I think you took y'all, well, well, no, you're not thinking of them.
Look, it's considered. It makes a holiday fall.
Let me go and say, fall, Saturday's. The day before Christmas?
The day, the day. And you thought.
No, 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 you can't, we, we can't do thirty.
Why don't we do two days of Christmas? Why do Monday?
So is that before Christmas Eve?
Cause if you do Monday, it's the commissioner's court, man.
Yeah, but you see that.
It'd be better.
We've had them on two days before. Michael, I like, well, twenty, twenty scale. Thirty.
You want one, I guess.
Right, right.
No, I think it's.
Well, I'm banking, but I, I sent, tell you a week, a week ago or so. I just sent holiday, I just sent holiday script.
July, wonder, I don't know which house that, that.
I'll send, I'll send you with the messages, this will be on the first, they'd send. I'll send you.
We got it hanging right there on her board.
I think what she did was, these are the days that are observed by the, the federal.
Federal holidays.
Yeah, that's what she said.
So thanks for.
What was it saying?
Christmas Eve.
Christmas Eve is on, we hope not, but.
He just worked up federal holidays, whatever. Christmas Eve, Friday the twenty-fourth.
Christmas Day, right? Oops.
They moved Christmas Day back to Christmas Eve, so they're having two holidays in one day. It's Saturday. Who, who, who typed that in? What site did you get that up on? At the USG website?
They were.
It was small, count days different.
I didn't get that, you get, did you get that email? I didn't either. Like I said, I've been looking at emails, I've been, I've just pointed.
I don't know, I wanted to say Christmas. They're not observing it.
There's just one day.
Christmas Eve?
On Monday.
No, sir? Christmas Eve.
That's just Timmy's observation.
Yeah. We got Timmy's observation.
She got sacked again, I mean, she got zero days off. So she put Thursday, four.
Yeah, Christmas Eve.
In Christmas Eve. Hey, we'll try to take that one out there. The day before the day before, yeah?
Yeah. Yeah.
I think what she's trying to do is study up for thirteenth, it looks like.
She was trying to keep her number of holidays.
Maybe it was like the twelfth.
The calendars and the weekend working out to the twelfth, probably worked out well.
People with vacations can take that day.
Take that out anyway.
You could probably go with from April ten.
July the fourth or July the fifth.
Did they? April ten.
Well, I think everything's good here except the third, the twenty-third.
Maybe I didn't see.
No, we didn't get it.
Did Miss Madison D. have them on the twenty-third anyway?
I must have. Hopefully.
Unless y'all's holiday, then we'll be holidaying everything.
But I do, I did do.
They have to think, yeah. I think we just take out that one, Mary, the Thursday.
Was it Thursday, twenty-third?
Yeah, we'll do that. That means it'd be off, right?
It's an even dozen.
But what we do and what they do is a different thing, you know?
Yeah, we set a calendar when somebody does it.
I'm not responsible for that.
I'm working all over anyway. I had made you out yesterday.
No, I didn't, he had me.
Wait, what are you talking?
I'm so.
You saw what she did?
Bruised.
Judges, did everybody make you see that accident out there on creation?
I didn't get called him.
But everybody made it okay, they?
Yeah, they did.
Yeah.
Even the lady that was pregnant and her baby was still good.
Yeah. She's got, the baby's got five.
Had a bull coming, six, six month old. Had a bull coming.
Thank God.
She would, it took too well, it was.
I'm lucky, I'm too well.
Bull, the bull didn't like it.
Bull didn't like it.
What's the mentality, did you have to go pronounce the bull name?
The lady, the, the lady, the pregnant, the pregnant lady made it, and the lady made it, so that's a good thing. Thank God.
I, I just say we take that Thursday, it would be new. The day before Christmas Eve.
Christmas Eve.
Okay, so. The day before Christmas Eve?
Yeah.
You're going to break that.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just leave it at the twelfth this year.
I'm going.
You can throw me in the bus if you want to.
He better abstain.
He's the mean one. You coward.
Schmoozer. We're going, we're going to observe the border from the fifth.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's how it worked out there.
It, it, that, that's why the federal calendar showed it, doesn't work on the fifth. Didn't show that.
Yeah, she had locked me for that extra day, I said, I, I don't think that's going to work. Well, we always have two days off, I said, well, next year you will, we're going to follow everything, you know, you have Monday off there.
No, ac- actually next year, one year.
He'll be on the same.
Cause it'll be the Sunday.
Sunday, yeah, well, make two years.
This may look like playing off load. Not going to vote either. Not my calendar. I sound like, like, just burly. Very.
Three people on the day, that number three, what?
Let's have a three-two vote, let's do it. Three oh two.
Should have abstained?
Okay, we're on. Is that a monkey?
Yeah. Zayn.
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 I'll be running. That'd be a twelveth, like, long as it's good.
Yeah.
Kind of. On Friday?
I agree.
I'm going to abstain, it's not my calendar.
There's a one.
We got it, it's going to carry anyway.
So three oh?
Three oh two.
I'm going to curve.
I'll pick it.
And blame for that.
Oh, God, boy, right on cue. No, we didn't do it.
Well, we do it any time, I reckon. I reckon you didn't talk about it on the calendar.
Okay.
You're up.
What time I tell you?
Huh?
What time I tell you?
Ten thirty. He did, he said, good guess would be.
He's been peddling, he's got it, right?
Yes. Okay, like we here, I didn't know I was on the agenda last time I was in here, I think, I like hanging out with you guys, in women.
We're going to discuss the demo a little bit, no?
I know. I think really, um, maybe I'm here just to answer any questions as you discuss, that might be the easiest.
Have you located furnaces?
We have not, and I actually have someone in there until December first. We close on the new property December first, it will probably take us the month of December to get, I won't say moved out, cause there's not that much to move, but to get cleaned out. So I would say January one, we would be completely out.
Well, what we, what we discussed, we want to win.
Excuse me?
But what, what we discussed back then.
Yeah.
And we do still want to ask you to pay our electric bill at the new place. That's what we take.
Well, we, Commissioner Riley brought up a little, um, here the other day to me, why we put it on there with regard to, it being vacant and water circumstances and not being in use.
Right.
Whatnot, it would, might, uh, cause a little, we had some hard winter weather, which would get in a little bit of trouble that way.
Well, we have right now, uh, because I was in there getting this person set up this weekend, um, every, the bathroom in every place, there's water, the doors are open and an electric film and the automatic uh, turn on, it's pointing to everything, so I think we're in good shape.
But what we're seeing is, once y'all vacate.
Yes, after that.
Then we can go in there and cut it off and bring it up.
Okay.
That way it'll be clear.
With a pressure.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be fun.
And we might even think about turning the electricity off and tool. You know? They say.
Well, it tells them kind of cities, like, with regard to, yes, uh, sure, longest holiday vacay.
That way it won't be a little circumstances or something happens, it won't be nothing to worry.
Right. We really, uh, can't even express how much we appreciate all the years, I've only been here a little while, but I still appreciate all the years of getting us there, and I believe that we are doing a lot to improve our reputation and our service, and I'm super excited about that.
I think you're right, um. Donald Field's office, he had office in there also?
It's empty.
Have you gone through, is there anything that's left in there? Any kind of record or anything like that that might pertain to that facility?
Right.
Um, maybe even back, um, to its original location, it actually opened it up, I think in nineteen twenty-two. So I don't know if there's any records over there or not.
I know there's nothing in his office, however, a lot of the areas that are still jail cells are piled with boxes and paperwork and things, and that's what's going to take us a while to clean out. I would imagine that's where we would find it as we go through.
Okay, and when you're going through those things, if there's anything that might look important, please let us know.
Yes, we, we are, right now, as we're uncovering things, we're bringing them over to the office and someone's going through them too, looking for them, cause there's some old records that would have been important for us and our data, so, as well.
Yeah, I just think about, there's something relevant there that, um, you are going to be displaying in a museum or something like that.
Correct. I know I have the paperwork for the roof that was put on recently, I know I have that. In second place.
What does this work, what is your unit facility?
I don't know, it has a back door and a back door, I don't know.
Come on.
Honestly, I don't, you know?
I do know that.
It's. Right.
It's about twenty-five hundred, like I say, somewhere in that neighborhood, and it is foam insulated?
Yes.
It is, it is a very costly, efficient, efficient building.
Yes, it's in, in, um, in essence, a three bedroom and a master bedroom, so it's pretty large, two bathroom, laundry room, a family room and a living room. All one story.
That's even better.
Yeah.
Tandy Kent says.
Absolutely.
Exactly.
We process now, like, creating security for the guests and clients up here.
Okay. Okay, well, yeah. Um, we're thankful for your success.
Yes. We are too, and if you know of anyone who still needs a turkey?
Maybe you've got it.
Um, about eighty, right now, we were given a hundred and did signups for that, and then. and then when we went to Walmart for our regular pickup, they gave us a hundred and fifty, and then when we went to United, they gave us twenty, um, so we have been handing out turkeys.
I know somebody bought five.
Well, there you go. Cause they're still in, the ones we have left were down to the ones that are four cases in the walk-in.
Is the new walk-in working?
Beautiful.
Gentlemen, ladies, if you haven't been over to the food pantry in the closed closet lately, it is absolutely a hundred and eighty-degree turn from where it was. It is clean, it is well-lit, it is well-organized.
Yes.
And it just took some elbow grease and hard work. Got it done.
Yes. And we're gonna close down the closed closet December twenty-second, and reopen on February the fifteenth, and in the meantime, get it all revamped. We've determined trying to revamp it while it's open is like trying to build a new jail. You may appreciate this, one brick at a time and not let the prisoners out. So, uh, we kinda have said, okay, let's just, let's get through the holidays and shut it down for a month and get it all rearranged.
That doesn't mean anyone will be like.
No, no. And black coats and our steer gear, things like that will be on the outside of, you know, but just the normal, uh, be able to get it cleaned up. And the county inmate team has been coming over now. They're coming every week, which is helping us tremendously with all the sweeping and mopping and cleaning and heavy hauling.
Good.
So, we really appreciate them. They get a few donuts along the way.
There you go. The place is really shocking.
It is. It is. And you would not believe the volume of food we got from the school district for their food drive. Uh, it's just, if you would fill this space about this high.
Wow.
This whole space, it's amazing.
I know, it is many. God is good.
All of it.
There you go. That's the best community.
Yes. So, and if you have any questions at any time, honestly, stop by and see me, give me a call, put me on the agenda. I'm happy to be here.
We appreciate all of you. The, uh, the move to the new facility will be understated and quiet. It's what it is, what it is.
We're having an online community shower. Uh, we've registered through Walmart, things that we need, and just having people, if you'd like to shower us with something, go and pick what we've registered for, have like a baby shower, a wedding shower, um, so, that's how we're gonna approach it.
Did you get your mattresses?
Almost all of them.
Very good. The hospital is doing a underwear drive.
Underwear, shh, don't mention it.
No, that's, that's the name.
Yeah, socks, underwear, pajamas.
Unmentionable, unmentionable.
Unmentionable, exactly. For the shelter in the food, that's because we're trying to start giving out things like that that are only new. Underwear, socks, that kind of thing. Dignity. I should send you my weekly, um, email update. And, and also, uh, Judge, we're doing a breakdown of all the expenses that we've incurred, so we can, uh, be transparent about that and, like, you know, where we are. Jack is working on it.
That's awesome. The money has been very responsible, James.
It has.
Transparency will make that place so much better. Will make the fight off better.
You think? I got nothing to hide. I wanna sleep at night. All right, you need anything, let me know. You're welcome. See you all later.
Coming in and giving us that information. What was our community blessed with, Kathy? Forward. Thank you, girl. Avenue fifteen is, this is our, um, big opening for, um, the property that we own, um, being a lot, a lot of the right, and the long addition to the, one city of the last one.
I received two bids.
Two bids?
Two bids.
I think, um, have you got advertising with you?
Yes, sir.
This will be open for review November the twenty-first, two thousand twenty, not before ten thirty A.M., and soon thereafter, as I may be reached, to set on meeting agenda, young county reserves option to reject any and all bids received. For more information, okay. Very good.
Bid number one.
This is my bid, right? I'm just joking.
Uh, bidder is Ronald Johnston, that's J.O.H.N.S.T.O.N., and they bid thirty-five hundred dollars. Um, okay. We have any past taxes and transfer deed, last year, sorry, a lot for me. Bid is five hundred and twenty-seven, seven, nine cents for the two lots, um, R and M Holdings, uh, Woodson. Is the N.
What, what holdings?
R and M.
Morning.
It's, um, Matt Remington and J.C. Matthews are the trustees on it.
They'll do five, two cents a piece or for both of them?
No, um, clear any past taxes and transfer deed in the last one, Matt pertaining to lots seven and eight. Our bid is five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-nine cents for the two lots.
Oh, these two lots.
I believe Ronald's got it. Whoever it may be is by a parking lot. We, um, J.C. Matthews and, uh, we can, some Remington.
Uh-huh, uh, Matt Remington.
We can accept any bid or reject any of your all bids or, um, take this under consideration?
I say we take bid number one.
Mister Ronald Johnson. I'll second that. Okay, we'll have to work with a deed, um, transfer deed, I don't know, we'll get Chris to do that, but I'll get somebody to do that. Maybe I'll come in. Something that, that we can execute, uh, that would be in proper order. We've got a deed, we've got the, the two, warranty deed. It's a little bit unusual. Well, we'll do it. I think it, it did say in advertising too, the survey expenses or any of those things would be, um, at the buyer's expense.
Yes.
The survey that I'll, that wish to be heard. Or pick exactly lots out, thanks without surprise. Yeah. Someone out there.
So, I'll give them up the call.
I'll get the tables ready.
Then.
Motion, wild. Brut. Brut. Long and brut. Ron Johnson bid. Yes. Johnson. Johnston. Yes, sir. Uh, thirty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
And if you don't find them, they're a successful bid, and we'll get that, um, property, we'll get that deed for a certain, short order as we can, and get that transferred. That motion, there is blue execution of a warranty deed to.
Yeah.
So, is the new?
Do a lot of dirt. All the lakes. There's the deed too.
Is that indeed the deed?
That is indeed the deed. Good word. Let's know, they were executing nineteen forty-five, and it filed in nineteen eighty. Oh. Somebody drives through.
In the bay, in the bay ward.
And I guess y'all will see this map. Last time you had it spread out here on the table.
Who was the commissioner then?
Well, that would probably have been Truman Lays.
Truman Lays. They should be able to take that right there, and that's all we need to do. They don't say that any kind of money's changed hands on that.
Okay, um, let's see, moving on. I think we're back one, two, that'll just be burn restrictions. We hadn't telephoned you, I don't.
Full rain.
We'll have to do.
Full rain.
Christians, I think, not do these things in December, for Christmas, New Year's, Halloween.
What's that?
About fifteen to December.
Full rain?
Boy, they should look real good right now. Yeah.
It's supposed to rain tonight.
It's gonna be.
Thursday, Thursday, I think. So, our next meeting is, um, we'll get that. Oh, by the way, come on, this year. What do you have? Run that up here. I'm gonna do that anyway. Black stuff. Travis, Travis, call. I guess you'd give the rest of the white, like, that is all on. Flexing certificate?
When is that starting?
Last century.
I guess Tommy, Tommy sure got the better of the light.
I don't think he had anything else.
Oh, my God.
Oh.
He get his, he get his fat shoes on, right, take you with him?
If he got his fat shoes on, I can't keep that.
Fat shoes?
Fat shoes.
He get his easy loafers.
He wants to eat. Are you gonna find things on him or what? It goes to the line.
No action on the burn restrictions or artwork, they will bounce it back.
Senate results?
A little bit.
You said Senate Bill thirty, said, said. Do you remember those on a rack? They.
I don't know, but I didn't do them.
Oh. I reviewed them.
I know, but sometimes when you get working a lot, people start coming in.
Only thing, only thing I have to change with the twenty, twenty-one. I'll do it. Sure.
What do you want in my number? You're holding three, three and four. I'm telling you. Across the northwestern corner of the camp. I'll let you go after a little.
We get a rain?
No, well, we just, we said per se.
Hot, hot per se.
Yeah.
No, had a woman grow in the warm.
All of them.
Oh, are you trying to be afraid of?
She said she didn't want those in.
She said she was.
I'm gonna cross the.
I was live. She went over and jumped the beds and laid in the grass.
Laid in the grass.
Yeah.
We have one more item to say goodbye here. Go ahead.
Hello.
Thank you. Our usual. What is she in?
She had one part. She had come out and do her, her monster, we all should check her out.
She hasn't been arrested yet?
Well, he told her as she was there that you had a wart, you.
Ah! She's on the border.
She can run too. I know, I know, but if I said, you shouldn't have given her a, I had her a rent right, she was running after. He said, I didn't have enough hair.
She's a fiery couple. Listen, big boy, like, we are.
Hey, I have, I'll make your bed and tell me.
Like me and you chasing this right now. Get you later.
I taught her.
I need to sign, I need to sign a.
Did you did?
God.
Do you need to go to Dr. Bob? I'm bruising adjusted. I put, I've taken two people of foot since I've been in office, and a brother and sister.
Play that running.
Same thing with that. Runners.
Maybe I'll start jumping.
This, this runners, runners.
I don't, I don't run it.
I'm, I'm proud of you, Jason.